So he went there to visit.
Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council meeting for July eighth, two thousand and twenty five at seven oh two here in the council chambers. I'd like to say welcome to everybody here who is in person, who is watching live or watching at another point. I also have the citizen, or I have the Boy Scouts, Troop One Fifty Six, who is, they're here tonight observing for their citizenship, citizenship, community merit badge. So I'm going to ask them to stand and help lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Thank you for that, Troop One Fifty Six. And again, welcome to everybody who's here. And I'm going to go ahead and ask our city recorder to focus on our role.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Garbo.
Here.
Mayor Ewoki.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
President.
Counselor Slater.
Here.
Counselor Torres.
Here, thank you.
We have item three on our agenda. We have several ceremonial items this evening. We'll go ahead and begin with our forty years of recognition for Albert Gouli. And I'll go ahead and ask him and our Public Works Director to come forward and tell us about the celebration this evening.
Well, it's special because we brought him a sash and flowers.
Well, Albert, you're the best sash.
So the city is very proud of Albert. Forty years. He came here from the city of Coquille in nineteen eighty-five, I guess, because it's forty years. I actually worked for the city way back then, but I didn't last that long here. He bailed on me. But Albert has been a key element of our street department. From the time there was a crew, I think, of nine when he first started. Down to a crew of three, back up to a crew of four. He's our lead operator. He's our supervisor foreman for the street department ever since we lost the superintendent about the year two thousand. So Andy's led, or Albert's led the street department after Andy left since about the year two thousand for twenty-five years. Forty years total service. He can operate anything in the city. Anybody that wants to know where anything is in the city, you ask Albert. He's got a good memory. I'm extremely proud that he lasted this long. And proud of him because he's kind of Mr. North Bend anymore when we talk about street tomorrow. So congratulate Albert with me. And I believe this is actually for you, Kelly.
Ceremonial coffee, Mike?
Hey, fly. And yeah, beyond a forty-year clock. Well, everybody else said forty seasons, but. Instead of a watch, because he's not retired, he's got something too big to wear on his wrist. My first clock action. And we really appreciate Albert's time and service. If you have any comments? No? Thanks for keeping her around. So now it's picture time. So.
Let's start with you two first, but we'll, we'll move. We'll hear your say, and then we'll have Kelly join you.
Okay. You want to hold any of your stuff?
Your photos.
There we go. I talked to you just now. I was going to need you to have you speak back just a little bit, please. One, two, three. Okay, and we'll have.
Okay, the next is Jim. Counsel come on again and we'll join you guys. Congratulations. Thank you. I won't make you shake my hand or hit me with the claw. Either way, we'll go ahead and back up here maybe a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Scoot, how we doing?
Yep. Great, this is David. Oh, I can, oh, I can read. Okay, awesome.
Okay.
Now, yes, and then thank you very much.
Yeah.
Albert, do you have anyone else you want to have photos with? You're good? Okay, great. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, before we leave here, is there anything that you have a favorite memory of North Bend or anything that you'd like to share?
I got a lot of memories.
Well, we appreciate your service and thank you so much. All right, well, that takes us to our ceremonial item number eight, which is our July Jubilee Ambassador Coronation. And I'm going to go ahead here and just take a moment to say how happy I am to have the new Jubilee Court ambassadors here this evening in our past court. This is, we have Vicki Erickson, who's our new volunteer lead for the July Jubilee Court. And she's going to go ahead and walk us through the coronation. So Vicki, it's all yours.
Thank you. Mayor, city councils, and fellow citizens, it's my honor to welcome you this evening as we kick off the annual birthday celebration in North Bend July Jubilee. Marking our city's one hundred and twenty-second birthday. This year's celebration will take place July eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. And we're excited to invite you to join us for the festivities held throughout the weekend. Tonight, we come together for a very special part of tradition, the crowning of our two thousand and twenty-five July Jubilee Ambassador Court. The Ambassador Court will reign over this year's three-day celebration and go on to represent the city of North Bend throughout the year at parades, festivals, and other community events. We're fortunate to have two members of last year's court here with us tonight to help welcome the new Ambassador Court. Please join me in welcoming Sophia Engelke Ryan and Clara Messner. And now Mayor Eagle, I invite you to assist with this evening's coronation. Mary and Tabitha Denton, sisters of Caitlin and Dilling, a freshman who likes to participate in softball, volleyball, secret dance, band, and choir. After high school, Ireland plans to attend Juilliard before commissioning into the United States Air Force.
On behalf of all past July Jubilee Courts, we present to you your official two thousand and twenty-five July Jubilee Ambassador Court. On behalf of the city of North Bend, we crown you Ambassador Ireland of the two thousand and twenty-five North Bend July Jubilee Ambassador Court.
Edwards, daughter of Whitney Honeyhead and Thomas Edwards, and lovingly supported by her step-parents John Honeyhead and Heather Edwards. She's a proud student at North Bend High School entering her sophomore year. As the oldest of eight siblings, she's grown into a natural leader and role model. Learning the value of responsibility from an early age, that's your leader and team captain. She also plays light football. Valentin both sports and with passion and dedication. After graduation, she plans to attend either the University of Kentucky or Navarro College in Texas to continue cheering while pursuing, pursuing a degree that will allow her to teach the power of creative writing. Poetry is one of her favorite outlets, helping her to express and connect with others meaningfully.
On behalf of all past July Jubilee, to you, your official two thousand and twenty-five July Jubilee Ambassador. On behalf of the city of North Bend, we crown you Ambassador Halela of the two thousand and twenty-five North Bend July Jubilee Ambassador Court.
The daughter of Jason and Jessica Monk. She is a rising sophomore at North Bend High School. This past school year, Ellie made boss at varsity soccer and track teams and plans to join the swim team this coming year. Ellie has one brother and as a custard kid transplant has only lived in North Bend for one year. She loves being out in nature and is interested in pursuing a job in that field or possibly working as a radiologist. With three more years of high school to go, Ellie is still exploring for options in order to make the best decision for her future.
On behalf of all past July Jubilee Courts, we present to you your official two thousand and twenty-five July Jubilee Ambassador Court stash. On behalf of the city of North Bend, we've crowned you Ambassador Ellie of the two thousand and twenty-five North Bend July Jubilee Court.
Paige is the daughter of Sarah and Theodore Miller and sister to five siblings. She is an incoming freshman in North Bend High School with a strong passion for both soccer and dance. She's a dedicated member of the Girl Scouts since kindergarten. Paige has long been involved in community service projects, including Bus Jam and the Knights of Columbus Food Boxes, both of which she has participated in since the age of there. She has a love of photography and especially passionate nature incentive and hopes to one day turn that passion into a career as a professional photographer.
On behalf of all past July Jubilee Courts, we present to you your official two thousand and twenty-five July Jubilee Ambassador Court stash. On behalf of the city of North Bend, we now crown you Ambassador Paige of the two thousand and twenty-five North Bend July Jubilee Court. All right, well, I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you so much. And especially here to Vicki Erickson, Erickson, our new July Jubilee Ambassador Coordinator. Also, our now past princesses, Sophia Engelke Ryan and Clara Messner, along with the other ladies that served with you last year. You will now be able to join my nineteen ninety-nine portrait out in the hallway of a past Jubilee Court. And it's very exciting to see the, this program back and thriving. This is really our official kickoff of July Jubilee. And so the court will be raining over all the activities to come and represent North Bend in so many other activities throughout the year. I do recognize one former Jubilee Court, if I could have her stand, Lynn. Lynn, what was your name when you were in?
Stolt.
Lynn Stolt, and I believe are you the only other former court member in the room? So I'd like to now have the opportunity for the new Jubilee ambassadors, I'd like to introduce you to the council. So if you want to say hello, then we'll go ahead and do a few photos. We'll have some ceremonial photos with the courts. And then we'll ask the ambassador, the council to join them as well. And then I promise you, very quick council meeting, so if you want to stay or sit. Approval of the bills and wastewater, I promise you it's going to be exciting. So, okay. All right, I know that you direct the photography, so I'll ask maybe the council to come down to bring you on one side and join the other just in the wings while we get this first photo.
Perfect. You're going to have you squeeze straight back as far as you can get the wall there. Great. We'll just do one to test it here real quick. All right.
Do you want counsel now?
Yeah, counsel. We're going to do just the counsel, then we'll ask the passport. Come on, go ahead and come on in, Counselor Slater. One, two, so I need one of you, wait, one, two, three, one, two, four. Well, it's just, we're going to do this. Yeah, we're good. All right, maybe squeeze in just a thing. See, I'll shift like one foot this way. Oh, to the side. Ah, there we go. Yeah, like I said, I'm not as good as David at this, but we try our best. Okay.
He is watching you online.
I know. Hi, David.
Hi, I was thinking that you could put the mayor in the middle.
Oh, okay, what are you saying? That's helpful. I know he takes like thirty when he does this, so. Okay, do you want to come in with your camera and get one? Are you on a different lens? Okay, we'll have our passport come in really quick for a photo. Yeah, let's have them squeeze between Mayor Eagle T and Counselor Torres right on each side of the girls here. There we go.
Perfect.
Okay, all right. All right, just one, two, three. Okay, do you want one more and then we'll do that's it? Wonderful. Thank you, everybody.
All right, let's give him a big warm welcome.
Oh, Mark, it looks like some kind of her. I think we lost them and they made you the host.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, we'll go to the consent calendar. Yeah, I think they're having some internet issues because I heard the the internet burped a couple of times there.
Yeah, it was a touch glitchy, but sometimes I don't know if that's my end or your end, but.
No, it was definitely the city side.
How's Bend?
Hot.
Yeah, I'll bet.
Yeah, I love the fact that I left the coast and it was sixty-four degrees, but yeah, it's ninety-two here.
Yeah.
It's all in service training and then the conference itself starts tomorrow. So today was nothing but training all day long.
Oh, good times. And here we go. We are back.
A short word there, that's the word. And while recording, I see our attorney and our city manager. So is there anything else we need to do? Okay, we'll go ahead and move to item four on our agenda and that is the consent calendar. Is there a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
I heard first and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the consent calendar, to accept the consent calendar as presented, they say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is number five, public comment. Is there anybody signed up to public comment session? All right, no public comment. And just as a gentle reminder, we do welcome those at the work session and the city council meetings. So we'll go ahead and move on to number six, which is to the state's donation bank account for the city K nine program. This is a suggested motion on page three of your copy.
I'm the rule to city council adopt resolution number three three six eight, authorizing city staff to open a separate bank account dedicated to receiving donations from the grant funding for the city's K nine program. So Chief of Police, the mayor, the finance director, the city administrator, just to be authorized, sign this.
Sure.
All right, first from Counselor Johnson, and second from Counselor Garbo. Is there any special great detail last night during the work session? So that's recorded and posted online if anybody has any questions on that. So I heard first, second, I'll go ahead and call the questioner. Everybody, all those who are in favor to move the city council to adopt resolution number three three six eight, authorizing city staff to open a separate bank account dedicated to receiving donations to grant funding for the city's K nine program with the Chief of Police, the mayor, the Finance Director, and the City Administrator, does it is, offers, signers, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to number seven. Is there a motion for the purchase of the Van Baffcon? Combination sewer, there's a suggested motion on page six.
I move the city council authorize staff to purchase this ten-yard back combination sewer through the source well contract from viral clean equipment in the amount of six hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred forty-six.
First, Counselor Jones, and the second from Counselor Hamilton. Is there any discussion? All right, again, this is a reminder, we do go over these in full detail during our work session. So this is our business meeting though, and I'll go ahead and ask all in favor of the purchase. All in favor that the purchase be funded from the wastewater capital fund accounts fourteen dash four four seven nine eight nine zero with an improved budget of seven hundred forty thousand and the post purchase price of. Let me clarify. We had our first, we had our second. No further discussion. All in favor of the city to move, all in favor of the to move. We're gentle.
All right.
Okay.
We'll do it.
I, all in favor for the city council to authorize staff to purchase a ten-yard Van Baffcon combination sewer cleaner through the source well contract with viral clean equipment in the account amount of six hundred and thirty, thirty-seven, six hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars. Please say aye. That's all that works. Just give me that. I didn't pull off the country. All right. Next on the agenda is the items eight, which is action of any of the children in executive session. We had none. All right, okay. Number nine, I see our city administrator online. Did you want to speak to the city administrators report?
Yeah, I sent out the city administrator's report electronically. Couple highlights over the past two weeks, we've hired five new employees to the city. So HR and payroll has been very busy onboarding with our new staff members. Also collectively, the finance department working with the public works and also our city recorder is working on a comprehensive review of our business license process. We're trying to find ways to make it a little bit more efficient, effective, and try to see if we can also streamline it completely online. We also would like to say that we received a grant of eight thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars from the Ford Family Foundation to complete the purchase of the fire department's drone for the city's growing drone program. Also in the police department, Sergeant White has successfully completed his sergeant academy through the Oregon Department of Public Safety Standards and Training. So that's a great accomplishment for Sergeant White. We also have two of our officers, our school resource officers. Yes, they are in Miami. This is for the DARE training. So upon completion, they'll be entitled to deliver drug and alcohol prevention education to students in the North Bend School District. And all wages, including wages, all costs, including the wages, lodging, travel, they're all covered by grant funding. Also want to mention that the police department has also been awarded a grant from the Oregon Department of Transportation. And this is to purchase two new handheld LiDAR speed enforcement devices. So these are portable units that can be used from patrol vehicles or on foot or even on their bicycles. And then Police Officer Keller Sawman will be officially sworn in tomorrow, July ninth. He brings the department to full staffing on paper. But keep in mind, four of our newly hired officers are still in training. So as a result, the department still doesn't expect to be fully operational until about summer of two thousand and twenty-six. Once we get them through the academy, through their training and back on the road. And last but not least, the street department will continue to operate with a reduced crew through mid-July while team member recovers. And so please be mindful that not everything will be gotten as quickly as we would like to because we are operating with a limited staff. With that said, thank you, and back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and I always appreciate you making sure that those are disseminated out within the community in various ways, including online and posted. So we appreciate that. Number eleven on the agenda is any committee reports. So I'm looking at council notes. Do you have a committee report?
Of course. Yeah, from the county U R D, which is the urban renewal for the county that we're on. They're going forward with doing a study on the north spit road and recommendations on how to fix that. The, the intersection as you turn on and off, they're going to look at doing something different there, accommodating more trucks getting in there. They're saying that there's a truck leaves that intersection every three and a half minutes during the week. So there's a lot of truck traffic running through there. They're going forward with that and we'll make a a recommendation to the county and the county is overseeing that repair project. So that'll be a good thing for the whole community.
You guys are only committee to report. So next, we'll go ahead and move on to number eleven, which is our council comments. Counselor, go ahead and see if you can.
I just have a couple of things. Again, Albert, thank you for your service. It's just, it's awesome. It's amazing. I just wanted to give a big shout out to you again. And then also Jay the magician is going to be at the North Bend Library tomorrow. Night four thirty to five thirty. Highly recommend if you, I mean, if you like magicians, I would really highly recommend go. I think he's the one from Eugene and everyone is so excited that I talked to that one last year. So please, if you know anyone with children, I would highly recommend go.
Awesome. Great, thank you. Whoa, Counselor Slater.
Couple of that's one of them, you know, when we had the recession in the nineteen eighties and the timber industries sort of contracted and then in the nineties, we lost the public timber for use. We have, as a community, been working our hinds off to try to come up with ways in which to. behinds off to try to come up with ways in which to uh provide jobs, provide opportunities, provide ways in which people can prosper within this community, and one of the ones said, you know, as as we were looking at approaches, we came up with in thousands, was this Outpost Development Council. And even then, yet, we've worked through and changed it and focused it better and come up, and really, and it's twenty-fifth anniversary this week. It's in the best form that we've ever had with the best uh structure to be successful in that way, so you know, I applaud it, and I applaud all of you. You know, I sort of joke about that, we worked thirty years to be an overnight success again. And we will be, so, and that's an excellent one. Albert, you know, it's always, it's fun to celebrate, I mean, everybody complains. You turn on TV and if you hit the news, they're not celebrating. But we should celebrate, and I applaud the way that David's put together a program where we celebrate our employees and their dedication, what's going on now. Since we're celebrating, you know, next week is July Jubilee, which I encourage all of you to come out and celebrate not only North Bend, but the most important part of North Bend, which is the people that are in it. And have a good time, put it together, and if there's something you want to revive or put in it, step up next year to make it happen, you know, whether it's a parade or cruise or whatever. Um because it can grow if you want it to grow, you know, it's people that work. And one of the things I'd suggest, you know, we had the the Scottish folk have, you know, the big burly guys that throw cabers in a big huge hole. Well, we had a variation of that, we called it stud throw. It's one of the counselors ran, who's had builder supply, was uh you know, two by four, eight feet long, and we would have our stud throw, we had what to, and then it was a kick. We had a good time, I thought it'd be interesting, of course, hopefully the insurance people won't get us on that particular one, but but that was a lot of fun. And the last little thing I want to say, you know, here several months ago, I had walked over here to pick up the mail, and I'm walking back, and suddenly my cellphone goes berserk. It had sounds coming out of it I had never heard. So actually, I picked it up, I looked at it, and it was a tsunami warning, that this is scheduled, this is doing, this is whatever, now our results weren't perfect in the area, but the beauty of it was, we were aware and we figured out how to be even better, and um I really have a lot of compassion and hope for the people in Texas, that they can come up with systems that make it better, that put things together right, and uh and I would ask you all to put them with your prayers. That's it.
Thank you.
Again, uh there are some July Jubilee things that are starting this weekend, and so things about the downtown cleanup, and then the historical uh walking tourist sundae. So I wanted to remind people that things are happening this weekend, and then the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. Um and I just want to thank all the staff and the volunteers, because it doesn't just happen. Um July Jubilee, like, will be a fun time for people to come and visit, but just think about volunteering at the amount of effort people are putting in behind the scenes, I think, so there's people for good ones.
Yeah, good point, thank you.
Albert, congratulations. I'll follow that, congratulations on forty years of service. And that's, most people aren't here, they're forty years old, so that's a P. Um, you know, the K nine uh program is doing good, I think we're, I haven't heard officially what the goal is met, but it looks like the board is, I haven't heard. But with that, uh it's pretty cool, and I know they picked an officer for it, and you know, that's a good good fig, and uh, yeah, I'm kind of excited for that, and now we got the drone, so the drone and the dog can we can train together. Uh I want to say, uh you know, uh congratulations to the staff for keeping everything rolling, I know the finance department does a lot of work, it doesn't get a lot of, thank you for that, and everybody else. So I want to touch base with that, um and something else. Oh, Fourth of July, I didn't hear we had any major problems with Fourth of July, so thanks for the party department and the police department for keeping, keeping the city safe for the weekend, so congratulations.
Hey, Counselor Jones.
So my background is private, I've worked for companies from twenty people to sixty thousand people. And uh every time I learn something more about our staffers, right down from the heads to everybody who works there, from how you all work together, how you all know, I'm not close, the fact that you have employees that are connected in decades, that everybody knows and loves, congratulations. Um that is a tremendous testament to how well you all work together, and how important it is for you to make a positive working environment. And I just, I just love that, I've never seen.
Right, well, I just can't believe, Albert, that they need you to start working for the city when you're in kindergarten. That's the only way that I can figure out how you have forty years of service, so, I mean, it's, North Bend's so amazing. You just look healthy and young, so congratulations, we're so lucky to have you, and it always says a lot about the city to see such longevity. Yeah, I'm going to, um, so, um congratulations all around to the new July Jubilee Court, I hope that you have a lot of fun this year, I know you're gonna see many of us out there, um I show up wherever there's cakes, I love the cake and all the other fun things too, the baseball, so it's gonna be a really exciting weekend. Um also want to say thank you, chances for giving lots of um congratulations and things, so I'm thinking tonight, we have the commanding officer of the airbase in the Coast Guard is here. Um so I just want to always give a shout out to the Coast Guard, and um I really hope someday that we have become an official Coast Guard community, so we go ahead and and work on that, but thank you for your service, sir, and thank you for being here. And um I think that's all, um after this, I will ask the director of uh the Boy Scouts here, uh at the conclusion of tonight's meeting, does this mean that they get their merit badge?
Yeah.
No. Okay. Yes, um we have, um so for my um other business, I have, that's gonna include my council comments, so I'm gonna ask the council for one more favor. Can we get a, can we get a picture with the uh with the Boy Scouts before we all leave? So maybe this will get them a little bit of a badge? So Megan, Ashley, come down, if you don't mind, you can come up and take a photo with us? Yes, all right, so sit down. All right, so let's go ahead and come down, we'll put you all here in the middle, and then we'll get on each side of you guys.
Yeah, it's one of the requirements, it's a total public meeting.
Okay.
There's much other stuff they have to do, this is actually a legal required event, so it's got a lot more weight to it.
Step one is like twenty. Get on, four on each side, and how about you over there, Counselors later, these are kind of boring a little bit, the work sessions are often where the meat of the meetings are, and this ends up being your business meeting.
If you're on the sides, if you could kind of turn side gap, yep, slightly a little bit, there we go. Okay, it's great, right there.
Okay, so everybody say troop one fifty-six. Got it, great, great, okay, I'll get up there and turn. Thank you all. I don't think there's anything else on the agenda, so. Okay.